Called to order the August 23 meeting of the Cary Town Council. And before we get started, I want to let everyone know that Councilmember Robinson got called out of town on a business meeting that was not planned, so she will not be here this evening to join us. At this time, I'd recognize Councilmember Yerha for our ceremonial opening. Mr. Yerha.
Thank you, your worship. Just preparing you for later.
Yep, thank you.
Well, I'd just like to ask you all to please rise, if you're able, and join me for the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
Pledge allegiance.
This is the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to adopt an agenda. We have some changes to our agenda this evening. If the council desires, we'd like to table item 6.117REZ23 Village at the Park PDD Amendment, Phase 4B to our September 13 meeting, which is our next council meeting, and remove also 6.2, which is 16REZ15 North Harrison Hotels, from the table to re-table it to our September 13 meeting, which is our next council meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to recognitions, reports, and presentations. We have scouts in the audience this evening earning merit badges if you would stand and be recognized at this time. We had a ceremony a little bit earlier, or a little get-together, reception, and this guy has been a town crier all over the world. And he's... We're proud that he's our town crier, as well as Markham's town crier. So at this time, I would like to, in recognition of our Lazy Days Festival, which is coming up starting Saturday, I would like to welcome our town crier, John Webster.
Thank you, your worship. I appreciate being here and I appreciate your time. I understand I only have five minutes, so I made a few notes. I was vaccinated with a phonograph needle, and I'll go on forever if I don't have these in front of me. Your worship, member of council, staff, guests, citizens, and of course, the scouts up in the top row up there, congratulations on your merit badges. It's fantastic. As your official town crier, I thank you for your warm welcome that you have given to us over the years. Your council and the citizens of Cary are wonderful examples of what the Sister Cities organization is all about, and if ever there was a time that we need a Sister City organization, it's right now. In Canada, our Prime Minister, Justin Trudeau, has managed to upset the King of Saudi Arabia, which has resulted in problems of thousands of people with economic sanctions. And here, President Trump has declared an economic war on Canada, which has had the same results. Suddenly, friends are discussing each other's parentage, and comments are being passed back and forth at an alarming rate. I'm not here to talk about the right or wrong of what's going on in these situations, because they're complicated issues and are best handled by our federal political level. It's the grassroots level, one person to another, where the Sister Cities work, and that's where it's important. With the support of your council, our delegations have been welcomed here. We've made friends, business agreements have been made. I'm personally doing business with Mike Brooks, which is Mr. Inside Sales. People have come from Canada, and Canadians have come to Canada, and Canadians have visited Cary. We had the Markham Concert Band down here associated with the Cary Band. There's nothing like music to bring people together. And the councilors, and the mayor, and quite a number of others, visited us in Canada to celebrate our bisan... I know, our sesquicentennial year, and they're still talking about it in Canada of where you are down here, so it's really wonderful. Yeah, I'm... See, I got off where I was supposed to be. One-on-one friendships is where true world peace will happen, and I thank Cary for creating a fertile ground where these friendships can grow. And now, it wouldn't be a right for a man in a red suit with a white beard from the north to come without some gifts, and so I'm going to ask... Going to ask my wife to come forward. This is my first wife, Mary. And we brought down here a well-wrapped article. Oh, with tape on it.
My wife must have taken it.
Oh, that's the way to do it. Okay, there we are. Your worship, I would like to present you as a representative of Cary with this picture. It's a picture of the Millennium Band Shell. You may have remembered it when you were up there. When our Millennium came around... Well, I guess everybody's Millennium came around. There was money given to each of the ward councilors, and most of them spent them on wonderful parties and get-togethers and so on, which were enjoyed but then have disappeared. The one counselor, Joe Vergilio, said, "No, we're not going to do that. We're going to build something that's going to last for quite a while." And he put together this Millennium Bandstand, which you were there. It's used continuously. The horse and carriage, of course, we use for special events, because it's a historical area in Unionville. The snow is just a artist's license there. We never have snow in Canada, no, but on behalf... On behalf of the people of Markham, I'd like to present this to you for wonderful times that we've had in the true... What's the word? The true spirit of the Sister Cities and world peace. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
May I do a cry?
Please.
Oh, thank you. Those with hearing aids may want to turn them down a bit. The bell is a little loud. Oye, oye, oye! My lords, my ladies, all ye in attendance, gather round! As the official town crier for Cary, North Carolina, I have an announcement of great importance! I read. Be it known that the streets around the town hall, including North Academy Street, will be closed to traffic to allow for the 42nd Annual Lazy Day Arts and Crafts Festival. The last lazy days of summer beckon us to celebrate the coming of fall by joining our friends and neighbors in a celebration of art, music, and food. And don't forget to visit the Sister Cities Beverage Garden when it comes time for a cool refreshment. Cary's Town Hall Campus hosts the festival for two days, this Saturday and Sunday. There will be such merriment and dancing in the streets, the likes of which have never before been seen, and ye are all invited, nay commanded, to attend. This cry cried aloud this 23rd day of August in the year of our Lord 2018. God bless these United States of America!
Special time of year. The only time of year I get called your worship. All right. We'll move now to Public Speaks Out portion of the meeting. We've included instructions for speaking at Public Speaks Out on the forum, on the printed agenda. If you'd like to speak, I'd ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes for their comments, and you may speak on anything, as long as it's not a public hearing, and that will be to your advantage, because public hearing speakers get five minutes instead of three. The three-minute time limit will be enforced, and not to be rude, but to be fair to all our speakers, there's a timer on the podium, which I'm going to watch and enforce. When the green light turns to a yellow light, that means you have 30 seconds remaining, and when the yellow light turns into a flashing red light, that's when I interrupt you. Again, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair to all of our speakers, and I'll ask you to conclude your comments at that time. To have an efficient Public Speaks Out, we ask that groups that have a spokesperson or groups have a spokesperson speak on behalf of everyone, so we don't have repetitive comments. We also ask that if you're planning to speak after the current speaker, that you line up on the steps over there, so that we can keep speakers moving rapidly. Please wait till your turn and signal, and that helps me signal their other speakers. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding that this is a business meeting. Please do not make remarks or comments from your seats, or applaud, or anything like that, and that helps us focus on the items at hand. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council members. I am Cindy Lefso. I live at 700 Tre Lonnie Lane, Cary, in Scott Farm subdivision. Our subdivision adjoins a property where the rezoning is in review, but not scheduled yet for a public hearing. This property's on the corner of Highway 55 and Jinx Road, bordering Apex, and will be the gateway into Cary on Highway 55. The 55 corner was originally zoned, Wade County Highway Commercial, so we knew one day this would be developed. However, the owner is pulling in two more adjacent properties, presently zoned, low-density residential to commercial zoning. They plan to put a Sheetz gas station with 12 pumps on this property, and dump about 50% of the commercial traffic onto Tre Lonnie Lane. We're very concerned about the heavy commercial use of this property, next door to an existing single-family, low-density neighborhood. It will create excess traffic congestion in an already growing area. Some of our concerns are, it will not be a good neighbor. In addition to the traffic, the high traffic, it is a 24/7 operation, and has the potential to cause contamination by gas spillage, as well as it is in very close proximity to our wells for our water supply, not to mention the fumes and other contaminants. This applies to Scott Farm subdivision and adjacent subdivisions that are also on well water. We'll also be affected by traffic from two new proposed developments, one at the end of Tre Lonnie Lane, which is actually in Apex, and over behind Tre Lonnie Lane, which is in Cary. Both are high-density developments, and then to add a gas station in the mix will be a traffic nightmare. Our neighborhood supports Cary's community plan, and we think other options would be a better fit for this corner. We've tried to share with the developer and owner multiple times that we need something with less traffic, less contaminants, and less effect on our quality of life. We've also tried to make recommendations. We do not see a gas station anywhere in Cary that is located immediately next door to an established, single-family subdivision, nor one with commercial traffic spilling out into the established subdivision's local street. We hope when this comes to rezoning, you will take our concerns into consideration. A few folks have also come tonight, and I'd ask that they would stand. That I represent. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, I want to first thank you for the work you do keeping Cary a very livable, enjoyable place. We all love living in Cary, and it's no small thanks to you and your council and your hard work.
Could you give us your name, please?
My name's Michelle Conlin.
Thank you.
I live at 6833 Wood Forest Drive, and I'm touching on an issue similar to what Cindy Lefso just before me spoke about. I made two handouts for you all, showing the area of development that are three streets: Tre Lonnie, Wood Forest, and Wade Drive, the area outlined in purple on my handout. And the green dots I've marked are from the iMap. Those are homes. These are single-family homes, and it's been zoned very low-density residential. We have two different actions being proposed for a rezoning. They're both in blue on the map I gave you. The one on the lower right corner at North Carolina 55 and Jinx Road is the Sheetz gas station that Cindy just spoke of. The other trap is the one, the larger one, is a property that is the subject of tonight's public hearing for a annexation.
Okay. You're not going to speak about that one, though?
I'm not going to speak about the annexation, but I understand that I can speak about the rezoning of it.
Yes.
And, you know, I got to be honest, as a planning body, I know you look at things holistically. It's a little difficult to talk about this potential townhome development and only talk about the annexation or only talk about the rezoning.
If you wait and come back at the public hearing, you can speak about anything you want related to it.
Okay, I was advised that we could only talk about the rezoning during the public hearing, and we couldn't talk about... Oh, sorry, the annexation. Oh, see, I've gotten off.
I think you'd be fine.
I appreciate that, because it's really difficult to slice that issue up. Thank you very much. Let me just walk through what I have here, though.
Okay.
So I've gotten green, the dots of current homes, best I could do. This, again, is from Cary's iMap and my highlighter. And then the second handout, well, let me just point out, there are approximately 70 homes within this purple area on these three streets of residence. And then the second handout I have is the property in question that would potentially be rezoned for what the developer has told us they plan to build, which is 135 single-family homes. And I just wanted to give you, the Town Council...
I got to interrupt you now. I'm sorry. Your time is out.
I'm sorry. I beg your pardon.
But you can come back in the public hearing and talk about that annexation.
Thank you very much.
And keep in mind, we haven't seen the rezoning, so we won't know what you're talking about.
Oh, dear. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. This is my first visit here.
Welcome.
So, thank you. My name is Marcy Dooley. I've lived on Plantation Drive, which is right off of Southwest Maynard, for 13 years, and in those 13 years, I've watched it turn from a normal suburban street into almost a Daytona 500, especially during rush hour. I don't know if any of the online neighbors are here tonight, but I encourage them to attend, to rally with me, to bring this to your attention. It's the intersection at Plantation Drive, where Plantation turns into two creeks, and it crosses Lake Pine. For months now, there's been an online chat at the website next door. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it all started with a notation of a fatal car wreck that happened back in the spring. I wrote a letter on April 25th that was addressed to the Chief of Police, and also went to David Spencer and Rob Myers, Traffic Engineers in the Transportation and Facilities Department, and it was also copied to Ken George, the district rep, representative. I don't know that that letter caused any action. I never got any response, and part of my purpose tonight was to come and actually complain that no one was paying attention to this intersection. My house, my home, is two doors up from that intersection, so I have a bird's-eye view of what goes on there, and with no exaggeration, there... It's a 25-mile-an-hour zone there. There are people flying down that street at 40 and 50 miles an hour, especially during rush hour, running the stop signs. There've been a number of accidents. I understand from the data presented that it's not a significant enough number of accidents to warrant a true red light or any extreme measures. However, coincidentally, just today, the stop signs that are on all four corners have been highlighted... You're nodding. The stop signs have been highlighted with solar-powered lights, which is so ironic that it just happened today, and here I am tonight, ready to complain about it, and obviously, someone's done something about it. So part of the reason for my visit tonight is to say thank you to whoever took notice. Maybe my letter triggered something. Maybe other people have chimed in. Like I said, I don't know if any of my neighbors are here tonight, but I certainly was hoping for some more support, and I'm hoping that those lights around those stop signs, those solar-powered lights, will make a difference, because that intersection, although it may not statistically be significant...
Dooley, I got to stop you now.
Okay.
But I do want you to know that if you've left your contact information...
Yes.
Someone will contact you. We'll make sure of that, right, Mr. Steagle?
Somebody's going to contact you...
Thank you.
And just give you information at the least...
Thank you.
Of what's going on, what can happen, what's not going to happen, what is going to happen.
Right.
And they will contact you.
Thank you.
And Mr. George probably contacts you as well, since he's the district rep. I'm sorry you haven't gotten a response. If ever that happens again, email me. I guarantee you, I'll get you a response.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Trevor Walker. I am a resident in the Wessex neighborhood. I spoke at the, I think, July Town Council meeting. Thank you for allowing me to speak again, and thank you for the work that you do. I wanted to present some information that I collected in regards to the proposed rezoning for the property on West End between Winstead and Old Reddy Creek Road. There was a request to increase the maximum building height to 100 feet. I happen to be a certified forester to the Society of American Foresters, and in my best approximation, the average tree height for those trees that border West End is probably about 70 feet to 80 feet, 85 feet effectively. I also want to mention that, as a homeowner in the Wessex, my house is probably one of the... Will have the greatest line of sight for if the maximum building height was increased to 100 feet. And so I just wanted to speak my opinion that in the rezoning application, there's a line where it says, "Will this amendment have any adverse effects on property owners?" And based on my assessment of these trees and their ability to buffer, it would have an adverse effect on my property. I estimate that from the top floor of a 100-foot-tall building, you would be able to see into my backyard and see my kids jumping on their trampoline. But also, not just from a personal standpoint, but just for the development of the West End Parkway corridor, I think that this amendment is inconsistent with the vision of West End. I know that there's been some changes, because the original vision wasn't met for it to all be a business-like park, you know, that they've allowed some residential areas, but all of them have been a slow progression. I think this is a little bit too abrupt and just inconsistent with the current climate of that business park. I think it could be more adverse effects to the people that worked there and for potential businesses, high-value businesses, you know, the Metlives, the Apples, the Sases, to develop in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I live at 201 Chiselhurst Way in the Wessex subdivision, and I'm here to speak in opposition to both of the hotel projects that are going up that surround our neighborhood. I'm opposed to granting variances to rezone in order to construct structures which tower over neighborhoods and residential properties. Granting one variance or rezoning one property opens the door for future developers expecting the same outcome. Getting in and out of Wessex, I've spoken to you all before about this, is absolutely a nightmare. It's already dangerous during the morning and evening rush hours and lunchtime. This is evidenced by the accidents that have occurred in front of the entrance to Wessex. After one of the accidents, I was actually told by a Cary police officer that it would be best to exit the neighborhood using Montebello. Seriously? Now they're telling us that we can't use or we shouldn't use the front exit of our If these hotels are approved and the U-turn is implemented on Harrison, it'll be difficult at best to turn onto Harrison from Montebello. Traffic coming from both ways, and then additionally, cars making U-turns, would be extremely dangerous. I respectfully ask, how will residents of Wessex safely and expeditiously get out of our neighborhood? Additionally, car traffic will substantially increase coming through our neighborhood as it becomes more difficult to get out on Montebello. Not only is the safety of the drivers at issue, but the safety of the neighborhood children that are playing is huge. We already have trouble with speeding cars, and we're like every other subdivision. They go 40 miles, 40 to 45 miles an hour through our neighborhood. I hope council's first concern is for our tax-paying citizens, and I hope, you know, keeping the integrity of Wessex as a safe, quiet residential neighborhood is important. In addition, towering hotels will negatively impact the value of our property. When we purchased our property, we inquired about the zoning regulations around our neighborhood. We were told they were OMI. Building heights were limited, and buffers were also required. Coming from an overdeveloped Bay Area, we were so happy to hear this. It has now changed, so we are now in danger of becoming surrounded by tall buildings. Very disappointing. While these hotels are not being built near the Evans Road area, I don't know. That's where MetLife is, that's where all the business is. I think they should take the traffic and the congestion and the noise down there, and let us have some kind of peaceful existence. I'm...
Sorry, I have to interrupt you. Your time has expired. If you have comments you have written down that you would like for us to read, you can give them to our clerk, and she'll make sure we get a copy of them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Emily Stantl Martinez, and I'm a member of the Wessex community on the east side of Cary, down the street from Sass. I've lived in Cary for eight years, but I've been coming to Cary all of my life, having grown up in Smithville, just 45 minutes east. Cary has always been an ideal community to live, work, and raise a family. So when my husband and I decided to buy a house, we bought our forever home in the Wessex community. I want Cary to remain that ideal community. And I worry about the rezoning of so many areas in our community to include more hotels. Cary is a highly desirable place to live, not just for people in North Carolina, but there are people from around the country moving to this great city. I can attest to that. I talked my husband into moving here from LA. We have the ability to be as picky as we want about what we invite into this community. I encourage the council to make sure we're inviting things that will add to our community and not turn it into an interstate stop for people who don't necessarily care about the health and future of it. Every time I drive into downtown Cary, I can't help but notice the pure gold establishment. And when I see it, I always think, who approved a strip club so close to a downtown that is filled with so many families and children, not to mention several schools? I also think, I bet if the people who approved that knew then what they know now, they may have rethought that decision. Please don't rezon the east side of Cary to the point. It's an interstate stop filled with rows and rows of hotels. I don't want this beautiful side of our city turned into the pure gold blemish of the future. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Could you move to your left, please? Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize for getting off work and just getting here. I believe other people have spoken about the thing I'm about to speak about, but I wanna chime in too. My name's Amy McMahon, and M-C-M-A-N-N, and I recently actually came to Cary, moved in with my fiance in the spring and then married, and as we were planning our wedding. And charming, just off Maynard, near the Lake Pine Road and the intersection with Two Creeks. And I believe others have spoken. I'm a runner, and I just love this community, the trees, the lakes, it's just lovely. But the speeding on those roads is kinda dangerous and flying through intersections and things like that. I try and obviously look both ways and be responsive, but I just wanna say thank you for what it seems to be some signs. I've not seen them. But what I'd like to add, just as a possibility, the speeding part on the roads. I noticed when I come, I guess I'm still new to the area, so sorry if I don't, but Two Creeks going towards Cary Parkway, when folks come down from where the swimming pool in that community is and they come rounding the corner and down the hill, they fly. I've been in the bike lane, very reflectors, but this is during daytime, too, and people around the corner. And I was trying to see, where is the 25-mile sign? You almost don't see them. So I don't know, I'm glad that the intersection is being, you know, made where people know to stop and things like that. But the speed part, I don't know if there's some ways to work on that. I called Montgomery County, Maryland. I have family up there. And the bottom line is, they have these camera things that take the picture, and they're called Safe Speed. So it's not the red light, it's the Safe Speed. 20, $40 a ticket. If you're in resident, you get the $40, you have 30 days to respond to pay it. Then you get maybe another extra 30. And if you don't, then they do it again and again, and they actually flag you where when you reregister, you then have an additional $30. So it ends up being $70. And so they will do this, and so if you've got 10 tickets in a year, you'd have 400 plus the 30. I mean, it adds up. And so people, what they said, at least in Gathersburg, Maryland, the woman I talked to today, when they put those things in, in certain locations, the folks that regularly travel, they know that that camera will take the picture with their license plate, and they will be, in essence, fined. I don't know. I didn't get a feedback call from the person yet to find out, well, what's the cost per unit of putting in one of these Safe Speed camera, you know, radar slash camera? But it's something that might be worth looking into because I do think with the growth in Wade County.
I have to stop you now, your time has expired.
Okay.
But I do appreciate your comments, and please feel free to leave additional comments with the clerk or email us.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Jill Kalashak. I live at 108 Williston Drive in the Wessex community. I'm here tonight to implore you to consider the community, as some of my neighbors and friends have spoken to you about tonight. We moved to Cary after having moved around the country several times specifically for the community and chose the Wessex neighborhood specifically for its location and the community. A few years ago, we, our family grew, and we looked around the Cary and the Raleigh and the North Raleigh area and came back to the Wessex neighborhood because of the wonderful amenities and the sense of community that it offered. We have three little boys at home, and we wanted to speak in opposition tonight of the two hotels that are being proposed. One on Weston Parkway at Winstead Drive and the other on Harrison, both anchoring the entrances and exits of our community, primarily because of the safety concerns. Right now, when I put my three little boys in the car to take them to school in the morning, as one of my neighbors mentioned, it's stressful, it's scary to try to safely get them across and to and from. And the same thing as we come and go throughout the day. It's to the point where we have to turn the radio off, we have to say, please, don't talk, don't sing, don't dance, because it's so scary to get to and from where we're trying to go. That location is a great location, but my fear is that it's not the right location for two several-story hotels. With the influx of other organizations such as MetLife and Apple coming in temporarily, I really worry about the traffic. I've had several exchanges with the town of Cary over email to ask about ways to consider the safety, additional streetlights, additional stop signs. And I've been told that we need choices in terms of communication so that we don't have additional traffic. But my concern is that those choices will have more people coming and going through our neighborhood, to the point that my friends and neighbors have made, they're already speeding. They don't know, like my neighbors know, that I have three little boys who might be playing in the front yard. And so my concern is that those people might not be looking when they're on their way to and from a business meeting. And I would just ask that you, I'm not sure who exactly I'm talking to. This is the first meeting I've been able to attend because I have those little boys at home. But as you consider the rezoning of these properties, you consider the families who make their quality of life within the Wessex community and really rely on the safety that we've chosen within that community. The balloon test that just happened, many of us took notice of that. We might ask that you would do it again in the winter so that we can get a true appreciation for what that would look like when the trees are off, I'm sorry, when the leaves are off of the trees and to consider that.
Sorry I interrupted you now.
Sure.
If you have additional comments, we would love to read them. If you can get them to.
Okay.
The clerk will be glad to.
Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi. Um, good evening. My name is Nathan Bradshaw. I am nine years old and I live in the Wessex community. I'm here to represent myself and my friends that live and play every day in Wessex. Like five people, Brady, Bella, Tyler, Maddie, Chris, and Charlotte. These are just a couple of kids that live on my street, and there are probably hundreds of more that live in our neighborhood. We bike, walk, and sometimes play soccer in a cul-de-sac. I'm concerned about the increase in cut-through traffic due to the proposed hotel. When the fastest route is backed up, people tend to look for some kind of cut-through to dodge through some of the traffic and get closer to the destination. I'm worried about people from different towns, states, and possibly countries using our neighborhood as a cut-through without knowing or paying attention to the kids in our community. Thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. I look forward, and I look forward to your answer about the safety of the children in our neighborhood community.
Thank you, Ms. Bradshaw. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Shelton. I live at 209 Chiselhurst Way in Wessex. I want to voice an opinion about changing the standards for the hotel that they wanna put on Weston Parkway. My perspective is slightly different, very fortunate. I live at Sass across the street. My whole world's a 10-minute round trip. I will tell you, I ride up and down Weston Parkway sometimes just for the pleasure of the drive. This time of year, it's very relaxing, you can't beat it, if you go at the right time. I'm not a Luddite, and I think that's probably a good comparison. I understand things change and people wanna develop property. I would not be against a hotel there if they kept it at 50 feet and they kept all of the lengths from the highway as originally zoned. I might not be crazy about it, but I could live with it. I don't think we should make a change to double the height and cut that in half just for another hotel. As a point of reference at work today, I just did a quick search for hotels in Cary, and it used the center of Cary. So to give you a point of reference, it used the Matin, which was .4 tenths of a mile from here, and it listed the Umstead as 2.8 and the Embassy Suites at 2.9. But within a four-mile radius, there were 22 hotels, 22. Could go do the research and find out how many rooms that is. But I do not believe changing the makeup of Weston Parkway, making the traffic heavier, which all of those comments are all true, but destroying that view and bringing in a building that's way too tall, even if you wait to do the balloon test again in the winter, a lot of those trees will be gone. I don't believe it's worth that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak at Public Speaks Out? Anyone at all? Okay, we'll close Public Speaks Out, and we'll move to the consent agenda. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, I'll take a moment to review our consent agenda items. Please understand that one vote approves all of these items on the consent agenda. We have minutes from July 26, 2018, 6:30 PM. 18A13 Eric Bryan Whitman Annexation. 17REZ33 Macedonia Senior Living Res zoning. Ratification of Resolution for Green Level Baptist Church. Ratification of Resolution for L&amp;L Performance. Revision to probationary period. Fire Station Number Nine Construction Bid Award. Triangle Water Supply Partnership Memorandum of Agreement. Fiscal Year 2018 Utility Reimbursement Contract Update and Annual Reimbursements. Would council members like any of these items pulled for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to our public hearings. The same rules apply to public hearings that apply to Public Speaks Out with one exception. Speakers now have five minutes for their comments. And our first public hearing is 18A08 Roberts Road and Pedro Properties Annexation. Planning Manager Wayne Nicholas will introduce the item, and council will not take action on this item this evening. Instead, it will return to a future meeting for a decision. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. Good evening, council. This request is for annexation of 37.47 acres consisting of property located at 7124 Roberts Road and four parcels located on Pedro. Annexation area is approximately 1,500 feet northwest of the Roberts Road and Jenks Road intersection. Property is not contiguous to the existing corporate limits. It would therefore be a satellite annexation. It is located outside Cary's ETJ and currently has a Wade County zoning designation of residential 40 watershed. Since the applicant wishes to develop site under Cary zoning and regulations, it's necessary to bring the property into the town limits. In doing this, at the same time, a Cary zoning designation must also be applied. In conjunction with this annexation, a rezoning request has also been submitted for the property. Public hearing for that rezoning has not yet occurred, and it's anticipated to be conducted within the next couple of months. Proposed zoning would increase the permitted residential density above that allowed under current zoning and allow for the development of townhomes on the property. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. So now's the time for a public hearing for 18A08 Roberts Road and Pedro Properties Annexation. And I would invite our first speaker forward. And getting back to the previous conversation we had, understanding that this is about the annexation. I understand that the rezoning and annexation is intertwined. So if we can focus mostly on the annexation, I would appreciate that. And keep in mind, I don't, I'm not aware that council has seen the rezoning, so we haven't seen it. So we don't know anything about it. And that's because we have a neighborhood meeting before we go to public hearing. Prior to the public hearing, the council's notified one week in advance unless they go to the neighborhood meeting. So we haven't seen it.
Okay.
So that's kinda where we are.
And please know that if there is gonna be a rezoning for this piece of property, that that will also trigger a public hearing.
That's right.
That you would be able to speak about the rezoning specifically.
Yes, yes.
So I hope that helps give you a little context about where we are.
Yeah, the conversations have gotten kinda popped up into several meetings, and I just want it to be, to have some continuity.
Absolutely. Please proceed.
Thank you for the second chance to talk.
State your name again for the record.
I'm Michelle Conlin, and I live at 6833 Wood Forest Drive. I've earlier passed out a handout showing the area that Three Streets, my own, and Trelawney Lane and Wade Drive, that's the area outlined in purple. And several of my neighbors are here tonight. If y'all would stand up and just... There are approximately 70 single-family homes inside this purple highlighted area on my map. And the green dots are each of these single-family homes. So as 70 homeowners, many of us have lived here decades in these homes. They're our forever home. We love the way that Cary has been zoned and planned, and we love the lifestyle we have here. Over the last few years, it's become that our three streets of homes are kind of an oasis of low-density homes in what's becoming a higher-density area. And we're all for the development. We support that smart growth. What the proposed construction, that is the topic of tonight's rezoning. The developer wants to put in 135 homes on an area about 30 acres. And that's the blue bit on your handout. So I've very scientifically gone in with my orange highlighter and put 135 dots in this blue polygon to show the contrast in the density of what we now have, 70 homes on, I don't know the size of these three streets. It's a tough wedge of high density for our area to swallow. It doesn't provide a transition, and I know that the Cary Town Council and the planners have talked about transitioning between different densities of neighborhoods. I didn't know if this perspective was obvious to the planners and other people on the council, but I wanted to put it out there from our perspective. Similarly, I have a new handout with red on it, right? The same area, again, the same two rezonings that myself and my neighbor have talked about tonight. And I've marked the best I can from iMap, the lowest elevation point within here. And it's on the subject property from tonight. We have a lot of runoff, soil erosion, and while it's not flooding... We have a lot of runoff, soil erosion, and while it's not flooding, because we live in Apex, which is really high geographically, we do have a lot of surface water runoff issues. I know that one of the considerations in an annexation action is whether the town can support the property being considered for annexation. And I want to suggest, at least at the present time, we cannot support another hundred thirty-five units. We cannot support three toilets per unit, that level of drainage, that level of sewage. And we can't support the impervious surface that comes with a townhome development. So between the impervious surface that comes from this townhome development of a hundred thirty-five units, plus the impervious surface and the gas station and the spilled from pumps that would come from the other property being considered within our purple polygon. I just want to illustrate to the council what we're looking at from a water flow and a public health situation. I understand that the Jack Branch project is proposed, and it's still under development. I caution that before the town moves forward on any consideration of annexing these thirty acres, that you run the models, the stormwater calculators, and make sure that you're looking at the impervious surface area that you're actually going to have with that development and the loading to your sewer and your water runoff. I'm afraid that if you plug up this low point with impervious surface, our whole little bowl of neighborhoods is going to get really wet. So I thank you for your time, and I thank you for hearing our perspectives.
Thank you. Anyone else for this public hearing? Seeing no one will close the public hearing, and I'll just respond to that before I open it up to council members. Usually runoff and those type of things are handled at site plan. So what happens, before you can rezone, you have to annex, then you rezone. And then at site plan, we have very strict requirements that require you to capture all, any additional water coming off of that site, and then some usually. And so if there are concerns in the area, council will usually look very hard at it unless they're offering even more to capture the runoff. So we have a history of doing that. So that's something to keep in mind. Well, what I would ask you and your neighbors to do is follow this, especially when the rezoning comes, and make sure that you come and speak during the rezoning, once we've seen it, because we don't know what you're talking about, or at least I don't. And that's very important to us, and that's usually when we see conditions. So what's going to happen tonight is, you may or may not hear a few comments, and then it's going to go be held until the rezoning comes, so we're not going to take any action. And then when the rezoning comes, we'll have a public hearing for that. And then those two will probably come together for a decision months from now. So we have plenty of time to come speak to us, not only at public hearings, but we have Public Speaks Out, which you spoke at, every meeting. So you can either speak at Public Speaks Out or the public hearing on this item until there's a decision made. We have two regularly scheduled meetings every month, and you can always email us. I always answer my email, and several other council members do too. So we're very anxious to hear of any concerns you may have, and we want you to follow this process and work through the process as we go through the process. And keep in mind, this is their proposal and not ours. And a lot of times, we get criticized for things that we have nothing to do with. And so we have to make a decision, and our decisions are made, our best decisions are made when we have input from everyone. So please stay involved. And I know I've probably said more than I should have, but I'll open it up to my colleagues and see if they have any additional comments. Any additional comments? Okay, very good. So thank you, Mr. Nicholas, and thank you all for coming for this public hearing. We now move to our second public hearing. It's another annexation, eighteen A eleven Seeng Development LLC Annexation. Mr. Nicholas will once again introduce the hearing, and council may take action on this item because we've already approved the rezoning for this item. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. This request is for annexation of nineteen acres of property located in the southwest quadrant of the northwest Cary Parkway and Evans Road intersection. It has frontage on both of those roads. The property is located within Cary's ETJ and is contiguous to the existing corporate limits. It's located within the Silverton Plan Development District, and as you mentioned, was rezoned in November of two thousand seventeen to allow for multifamily residential use. The request is associated with a development plan that proposes two hundred and twelve multifamily dwelling units. Plan is currently in review process, and based on the provisions of the LDO, can be approved administratively by staff once it is determined that the plan meets all applicable requirements of the LDO. In accordance with the ordinance, the property must be annexed before the development plan can be approved. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Now's the time for public hearing on five point two, which is sixteen A oh three Annexation, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing on the annexation for the Seeng properties? Seeing no one will close the public hearing, and open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve eighteen A eleven Seeng Development for annexation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to our third public hearing, and it is another annexation. It is eighteen A twelve AKM Properties will once again be produced, be introduced, not produced, introduced by Mr. Nicholas, and we may take action on this one as well. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. This annexation is for two properties totaling point eight eight acres located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Deerwood Place and Old Trinity Circle. Annexation will also include point one nine acres of adjacent right-of-way. Properties are located within Cary's ETJ and are contiguous to the corporate limits, both are zoned residential twelve. Request is not associated with a proposed development plan or rezoning. The property owner is wishing to connect both properties to the town utilities. Must be annexed in order to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. So now's the time for the public hearing for eighteen A twelve AKM Properties LLC Annexation, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one will close the public hearing, open it up for questions, comments, or a motion from council.
Make a motion to approve annexation eighteen A twelve.
A second.
And a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. We now move to our fourth public hearing, eighteen R Z oh four Green Level Mixed Use Development. Our planning manager, Rob Wilson, will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this tonight, but instead will refer it to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and this will return to us at a future meeting. Mr. Wilson.
Good evening, Council. Tonight, we're pleased to bring you the Green Level Mixed Use Destination Center Preliminary Development Plan. There are three key things we want to share with you about this proposal. One, the site is in the Destination Center for the Green Level Special Planning Area and has been envisioned as a center of activity for this area for over two decades. So this is a special location for both the town and the adjacent community. Second, the proposed development could include over a million square feet of development on the seventy-acre site. As the first major development in this Destination Center, it would also set the bar for the rest of the area. Three, although the staff has been working with the applicant on this proposal for almost a year, this is the beginning of the council's review process, and there will be multiple opportunities to evaluate this proposal as it moves through that process. The proposed development site is located west of NC five forty and is bisected by Green Level West Road. The site and the majority of the land around this interstate interchange are largely undeveloped at this time. The town's adopted roadway WITSMAP calls for Green Level West to be built out as a four-lane thoroughfare with a landscape median. The widening of Green Level West to four lanes between NC fifty-five and NC five forty, which is identified by the red box on this aerial, was just completed this past April. The portion of Green Level West Road that's west of NC five forty and not included in the red box is presently a two-lane ditch cross-section. The site's located east of the confluence of two major creeks, White Oak Creek to the south and Bachelor Branch Creek to the west, both of which are part of the town's greenways master plan. The White Oak Greenway, which is represented by the solid green line meandering along the bottom of this aerial, runs across the southern portion of the site, while the future Bachelor Branch Greenway, which is represented by dashed green line in the middle of the aerial, will be located north and west of the site. In contrast to the blue property that represents the site, I want to note that the properties marked in green are all owned by the town. Thomas Brooks Park and USA Baseball are in the middle near the top, and there's a large undeveloped town-owned track between the park and the northern edge of the site. The town also owns properties that are located south and southeast of the site. A potential, a potential future town park is located in the southwest next to the new high school on Roberts Road. The northern portion of the site is located in the town's ETJ and is zoned residential forty. The southern portion of the site is located outside of our ETJ and has county zoning, residential forty watershed. The applicant has submitted an annexation petition that's running concurrently through the process. Since the site is in a Destination Center, the applicant's proposing MXD rezoning for the site. The proposed development program includes a mix of uses and has minimums and maximums for each of these different uses. It includes the ability to have a hotel and a hospital. A condition has also been offered to only allow drive-through facilities for banks or pharmacies. I made a reference earlier to this area being envisioned as a center of activity for over two decades. In nineteen ninety-six, the town adopted its first townwide land use plan, which designated this area around Green Level West Road, and at the time, which was the future NC five forty interchange, as a mixed-use community activity center. In two thousand and four, the southwest area plan refined this vision with a mixed-use gateway center west of the interchange and office to the east. With NC five forty finally being built, the twenty seventeen Imagine Cary Community Plan recognized that this was one of the last undeveloped Destination Centers in Cary and restored an emphasis on mixed use with a special emphasis on office and employment uses in all four quadrants of the interchange. The site is outlined here in yellow inside the dark brown Destination Center area. There are numerous policies and recommendations for the site located throughout the town's Imagine Cary Community Plan. The Green Level Special Planning Area includes specific recommendations for this Destination Center. Highlights include vertical and horizontal mixing of uses, taller buildings, structured parking, and a high level of walkability. There are also several themes for this Destination Center, including maintaining a tie to the area's rural character and encouraging environmental design, as well as paying attention to historical assets and design consistency. The proposed preliminary development plan, or PDP, includes thirteen development pods that are delineated by a grid-like network of streets. The buildings along Green Level West will be a minimum of three stories in height, and a minimum of six community gathering areas will be provided throughout the project. The development also includes a commitment to providing a combination of open space features and hardscape elements that will combine to create a north-south pedestrian corridor through the site, ultimately linking the development to the White Oak Greenway to the south and the future Bachelor Branch Greenway to the northwest. In terms of proposed uses, the PDP includes office, commercial, and residential uses. A hotel and hospital are also potential uses within the project. Since the site is bisected by Green Level West Road, which will eventually be a thoroughfare, the development program is actually broken down into two areas. The area north of the road will have two hundred to four hundred thousand square feet of office and institutional uses with fifteen to thirty thousand square feet of commercial uses. A hotel and hospital are potential uses in the northern area, however, residential uses are not proposed in this area. The area south of Green Level West will have a hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand square feet of office and institutional uses with fifteen to twenty-five thousand square feet of commercial uses. In the southern area, a hundred to two hundred and fifty residential dwelling units are also provided. A hotel remains a potential use on the south side of the road, although a hospital is not. Combined, the proposed development could include up to a maximum of three-quarters of a million square feet of office and institutional uses, fifty-five thousand square feet of commercial, two hundred and fifty residential dwellings, two hundred and fifty hotel rooms, and a hundred-bed hospital. The site is reliant on access points A and B for ingress and egress on Green Level West Road. Access A will include the northern leg of what will eventually be a full movement intersection. Access B will offer a median break with limited turn movements. Access points C and D are right-in, right-out. The applicant is also pursuing the option of adding access E directly across from the existing NC five forty ramp. The town, NC DOT, and the NC Turnpike Authority continue to analyze and discuss this possibility, and we anticipate having more information when this proposal returns to council for a potential decision. At this time, staff believes the overall development can work with or without access E. The traffic study recommended improvements at ten intersections, the applicant's proposing to make improvements at seven of them. The others are still being discussed as part of our ongoing dialogue with NC DOT and the Turnpike Authority, and we anticipate having more information when the proposal returns to council. The PDP proposes two categories of streets, primary and secondary. The primary streets are represented by the blue dashed line, and are the corridors expected to function as collectors throughout the development. The primary streets running north and south in the development are proposed to have dedicated four-foot-wide bike lanes. The primary streets running east and west in the development, though, are not proposed to have dedicated bike lanes, just wide outside lanes. So what this means is that the segments identified here on the PDP with green checks will have dedicated bike lanes, and the segments that are identified with red Xs will not have this feature. Staff believes that it would be preferable for all of these streets to have dedicated four-foot-wide bike lanes. The other type of internal streets are labeled as secondary, and they're shown on the PDP in purple. These streets effectively mimic our local street standard, although the applicant is requesting a modification to allow angled parking on these streets. Staff believes that the secondary streets are appropriate as proposed. The PDP includes several conditions regarding both surface and structured parking. To encourage the view of the buildings from the street, surface parking is limited along Green Level West Road. It's only allowed between buildings and the street where retail or medical uses are present, and in such cases, it's limited to one double-o to bay, as shown here in the picture on the top right. The view and amount of structured parking that fronts from Green Level West Road is also limited to a maximum of twenty-five percent of the total frontage. There is a significant commitment to providing structured parking in the PDP. All five pods that front on Green Level West are required to have a minimum of fifty percent structured parking. The other three internal pods without residential uses are required to have a minimum of thirty percent structured parking. The pods that include residential uses do not have a structured parking commitment. The PDP also includes design and/or screening requirements for structured parking that exceed those normally required by the town's community design manual. Based on topography and the limited amount of existing tree canopy, a modification is being requested to allow the developer to clear, grade, and replant the Green Level West streetscape. In exchange for this modification, the applicant is proposing some additional conditions. All large canopy trees would be a minimum of three inches in caliber installation, fifty percent larger than the town's usual requirement. A street-side trail will be provided along the southern side of Green Level West to promote walkability and connectivity, and limiting retaining walls that are visible from the road to a maximum of six feet in height and requiring them to have a decorative appearance. The applicant's also requesting a modification regarding the height of retaining walls and stormwater devices. The request is to allow such retaining walls to be up to ten feet tall, if decorative in appearance and not visible from a public street. The normal limit's six feet. The additional height is being requested to increase buildable area and opportunities for economic development in a manner that minimizes environmental or aesthetic impacts. The applicant's requesting to also reduce the width of the required internal streetscapes by fifty percent to achieve a more urban feel and character within this portion of the overall Destination Center. The reduction will be from thirty to fifteen feet on the primary streets and from fifteen to seven and a half feet on the secondary streets. The PDP still proposes to meet the required landscaping quantities for these areas. In cases where buildings front on internal streets, the developer would have the option of integrating hardscape materials with a street tree planting program when certain additional design criteria are met. This option would also provide the opportunity for community gathering spaces to better transition into such streetscape areas. The LDO requires five thousand square feet of community gathering space for such a project. The PDP proposes forty thousand square feet, which is eight times the requirement. Additional conditions require a minimum of six areas, a minimum size of at least two thousand square feet for each of these gathering areas, and spacing requirements to make sure they're accessible to all buildings yet spread throughout the project. Of the three potentially historic structures on the assemblage, only one proved to be architecturally intact and thus worthy of preservation. Based on its location near Green Level West Road, which will be widened as part of this project, as well as its proximity to access point C, staff believes that preserving the house in place is not practical. Staff has discussed relocating the house with the applicant, and they've made a commitment to relocate and preserve the structure. We are still discussing the technical details of this commitment and anticipate having final language prior to the proposal returning to council. So to summarize, the PDP proposes modifications to the land development ordinance that would allow grading and replanning of the Green Level West streetscape, remove three champion trees that are situated in locations where it's not practical for preservation, given the proposed development program and the envisioned... the proposed development program and the envisioned mixed-use nature of this destination center site, to also reduce internal streetscape buffers, allow parallel and angled parking on internal streets, and allow decorative retaining walls and stormwater devices to be taller if they're not visible from a public street. And although it's not an LDO modification, the PDP does propose street classifications that would modify some of our standard specifications. As previously mentioned, staff believes it would be preferable if all of the primary streets included dedicated four-foot wide bike lanes. A neighborhood meeting regarding the proposal was held at Town Hall on June sixth. There were fifteen attendees. Questions were raised about the PDP, including the proposed uses and phasing, as well as how to get a hospital in this location. No opposition was voiced. We've also received several calls and emails from developers and adjacent property owners regarding the status of the proposal. At this time, I'll turn the podium over to the applicant for his comments. Staff will be available following the public hearing if there are any questions regarding the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. At this time, I would invite the applicant forward for their remarks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Baron with Morningstar Long Group here on behalf of the applicant in Duke University Health System. Rob has provided a comprehensive presentation of the nuts and bolts of this application, and the staff report does an excellent job of describing that. So I'm not going to reiterate the things that have already been covered either in the report or in Mr. Wilson's presentation. I'll say, when I first got the call on this, I was excited to be working on such a signature piece in the destination center. It's an exciting project, an exciting piece of land. When I found out who the applicant was, who the property owner is, they own the site. They bought it unentitled. And what they wanted to do, I was even more excited. It's not a case where what they wanted to do was inconsistent with the town's long-term vision. It's exactly what the town wants to see here. It's a significant amount of employment. It's a significant amount of office. It's what the plan calls for. So it was one of those rare opportunities where I get a phone call from a client, and I don't envision an uphill swim, and that's been true. It's taken us a year to get here, but that hasn't been through the fault of anybody involved in the project because it's a significant piece of property and because it's a complex plan. We've been working closely with Mr. Wilson and the rest of the planning staff, and it's been, it's been a great experience to work through. The preliminary development plans, as you all are aware, are complicated beasts, and so making sure that we button those up the way that we should is the right thing to do, and this town staff should be commended for the significant amount of work they've put into it. I'd also say I've been very impressed. I haven't done a lot of work with Duke before on development projects. I haven't done, I haven't had a lot of experience with them. You don't know what you're going to get when you haven't worked with a client before, and I've been incredibly impressed with Duke. Duke clearly views this as, you know, they don't swoop in an entitled land and then move on. They don't sell. I mean, they're developing, they're owning, they're operating. They have been great to work with as an attorney because they've been incredibly accommodating. Staff has provided a lot of constructive thoughts on how things should be structured, and I have been impressed with Duke's willingness to be accommodating. It's not just to gain approval from the seven of you. That's obviously part of it, but ultimately, I've been impressed with Duke's willingness to do what's good for the town because they believe what's good for the town is good for them. And so the hard work that's been put in to this case heretofore and the work that will continue on the lingering issues that we're continuing to work with the staff on, ultimately, I believe, will produce a plan that everybody is supportive of. And so with that, I'm going to keep my remarks very limited. We look forward to the feedback that you all have and look forward to presenting the case to planning and zoning and ultimately coming back to you all. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Baron. So now's the time for the public hearing for eighteen REZO four green level mixed-use development, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? So no one will close the public hearing? And I'll open it up to council members for questions or comments. That's kind of fascinating to me. This is seventy-acre, large, mixed-use. Fenton's ninety. I mean, it's not that far away from Fenton as far as the size of it, and we have no one speaking. So that's a shocker.
Question?
Go ahead.
So the first comment is, I was going to mimic what you said, you know, a million square feet of development, this many acres. Obviously, the first time we're seeing it, even though it's taken, as Mr. Baron said, a year to get to this point, I really appreciate that. But there's some significant questions that I have specifically around connectivity. I know you're surprised. But staff did not, you had a comment about the dedicated bike lanes on the northern segments. It looks like the applicant has, has kind of, you know, bifurcated that, that they want dedicated bike lanes on one side but not on the other side. Can you explain that? Or maybe the applicant can, because I'm not, I have some concerns about that. I know what we're trying to do at the Fenton is to do separated cycle tracks, so why wouldn't the applicant do something like that, especially for an area that has a significant amount of internal traffic? Can someone speak to that? Question?
I'll start. I believe this is a question that's probably best completely answered with a member of our transportation facility staff, but I believe that what's being proposed is consistent with what's envisioned in the community plan. Is pre- them? I don't see. Are you available to confirm that?
The removal of bike lanes is consistent?
The four-foot striped bike lane is consistent with what's illustrated in the community plan? Is that?
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. We've been working with the applicant in determining a good cross-section that would accommodate both vehicular and pedestrian slash bicycle mobility on all of their internal streets, and this has been one of the cross-sections we're still discussing on that, and there is a good possibility that we may be able to work something out with them where we can accommodate both bicycle and pedestrian. So that's why, that's the reason why it is shown as something that we're still pushing to get a bicycle accommodation.
I see. So you're still in the evaluation discussion?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. That's what. And the other questions that I had were around the modifications regarding ten-foot-tall retaining walls. Both staffs take on that?
Right. They're just proposing that modification as it relates to stormwater facilities where they wouldn't be visible from public streets. And they're still proposing that they would provide a decorative appearance, so it wouldn't be your standard look. We think, given the limited visibility, the fact this is a destination center, it's a reasonable request for them to make.
Okay.
What makes them not visible from public streets?
That's something that we'll have to determine as part of development plan. We'll have to look at topography. We'll have to look at location to determine whether or not it's something you can see.
Okay. We have a council member not here that's never going to vote for that. I promise you.
Well, depends if you can't see it, you can't see it. I just, I want to know how I can't see it. You know, is that through landscaping? Is it topography? Is, what is that? So you don't have to answer it now, just later on.
All right.
Area one says no residential proposed. Does that mean no residential can be built?
That is correct.
Oh, that's correct.
If there is residential, it would be only in the southern portion of the site.
Only in the southern.
That's correct.
I share your, I won't say concern, but questions regarding the bike lanes, especially in a campus or development being built by Duke Hospital.
That's so exciting.
Anything that encourages alternative modes of transportation and healthy, active living, I think is a positive. So keep working on that as you are. I'm thrilled with the exceeding LDO requirements for gathering space, and I was actually surprised that for a development of this magnitude, that the LDO would only require five thousand square feet of gathering space. So not to deal with today or tomorrow, whatever, but I think that's something that maybe we as a council should look into in the future that, you know, is that adequate when you're bringing in this many units, this much intense office and retail development? Is that enough? Just a personal comment, I hate the angled parking, but it is what it is. So I'll leave it at that.
So kind of sort of the follow-up on those two. You have two sections divided by four-lane median divided. Before that four-lane median divided is built, it would be nice to have a grade-separated connection somehow, like tunnel underneath. I don't know what the elevation's like, if that's possible, if it's all one level or if there's opportunities, but especially if you're going to rebuild the road, that's a great opportunity to connect these pieces, especially when you're talking about bicycles and pedestrians.
Right, by five forty.
That would be wonderful, rather than having people trying to run across a four-lane median-divided road, especially one that's next to I five forty. So I imagine the speeds will be pretty significant.
And next to White Oak Greenway. I mean, with a connection, which I have to thank the applicant for, I think having a connection, a proposed connection to the White Oak Greenway is phenomenal, especially now that White Oak Greenway is going to the American Tobacco Trail, which we know then will become a commuter location. This is such, and I'm just going to throw it out there, this is such a big deal, right? This is a destination center. We only have two left, right? I wonder if there's a potential for us to have a work session on this because it's a lot to take in at one time, and I'm wondering what the rest of council thinks about that because there's, there's a ton of stuff here and a lot of modifications requested. I'm not saying that they're good, bad, or indifferent. I just want to throw it out, whether or not, I'm the only one that thinks that.
And I told Mr. Yaroh on Monday, that's the first thing he said about this, is this is about the size of Fenton. We should have a work session on this. I'll let you speak for yourself.
I'm glad that Mr. Wilson said there would be multiple opportunities for us to look at this in the future because it is, it's a signature project and it's a lot to take in. You went through all this and twenty questions came to my mind. I don't think a public hearing is the proper time to get into those weeds. So yes, a work session would be a wonderful thing, even though I'm not the greatest fan of work sessions, as you well know. I think we do need something like that for this particular project. It is, it's almost another Fenton, and we don't want to spend three or four years, whatever we spent on Fenton on this, but I do think it requires more than just a normal council meeting process. While I do have the floor, I just want to thank the applicant for two things. One is thanking them for the recognition for the preservation of the Mills House and for coming up with a plan and for actually including that plan on the preliminary development plan. I think that's a wonderful thing. And also thank them for recognizing that this is in the green level special planning area and coming up with some architectural design features and green infrastructure also on the PDP. More of that, the better, in my opinion. But those are some of the things I think we can look at as we move on. Yeah, I have other questions such as.
Please.
You have, but no, I prefer.
For later.
If we're going to have other opportunities.
Okay. So I'll look at Mr. Stiegel. If the council desires to have a work session, you need a motion. No?
No.
Do we have opposition to that?
Well, I'm just going to remain neutral. First of all, I think it's apples and oranges. I think the topography's different. I think, you know, what's being proposed, there's a lot of unique factors about the eastern gateway that come into play. But if that's what it takes to make everyone comfortable, fine, you know.
Okay.
But, you know, to say, it has to be. I think there's mechanisms in place that we will be able to see everything. We will have many opportunities to provide that input, but heck, that's what work sessions are about. So I'm neutral to it. If that seems to be what the mindset is, so be it.
I hesitate to compare this to Fenton just on size alone. I mean, is this something that they're looking for a developer agreement with the town on in any way, shape, or form?
That has not been raised at this time. So no.
Okay, so right there, it's clearly a different type of project than Fenton. Yes, it's got some size to it and signature project and all that, but, I mean, after looking at the staff report and hearing from staff and the applicant tonight, I had a couple questions, a few questions. I just don't know what rises to the level of scrutiny or council scrutiny that a work session might, you know, require, so.
Maybe it'd be a short work session.
Well, or maybe those council members that have a lot more questions maybe than I do ask those questions and work with staff and maybe get answers to those questions. I just, I feel like staff has done their work on this. The applicant's done their work. As I mentioned earlier, they've been a year to get to this point. We've had not one citizen show up at the public hearing to express a concern. You know, I think everybody's done a good job on this one, so I'm not going to argue with, you know, if that's what it takes to get everybody comfortable with it, then maybe okay, but I just, I don't know that I want to sit in an hour and a half meeting to just cause.
And one of the reasons that came up for me, just to explain, is there's some pictures that are being shown in the presentation that talked about gathering spaces that showed some pretty urban streetscapes, significant modifications actually to streetscapes. I'd like to know what those are going to look like if we go from, you know, some of our standard streetscapes and they, maybe they have a great proposal, right? Just doing a blanket modification on a streetscape? I'm generally going to lean no, but if you have a modification to a streetscape and you're going to show me what you're going to make to make it better because of the modification, then I might lean towards it, right? So there are some things that are unique about this, also being such a heavy use, you know, seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet of office and retail and all that. I want to know a little bit more about what, the way it's going to look, just because it is, you know, one of our last destination centers. So I think the scrutiny, the additional scrutiny, the extra hour, hour and a half spent, all of us collectively with our very diverse points of view looking at it, might be valuable.
About this end, Mr. George, what do you think?
Well, about a year and a half ago, I asked to go through the process of understanding this whole development process because I was the newbie, and I landed in the developer review committee for the first time this was brought. So I've seen it a year and a half ago when it very first came, and I followed it along the way. So it's not, it's not new to me coming out and been following it some. I think the benefit of more information would be helpful about what's actually potentially going to happen beside this and not in this because I think what I've seen, I've seen proposals of what may be coming beside it, like for instance, on the north side, possibly between it and five forty, having some high-density residential. So then you don't just have commercial on the north side, but that's all Duke is doing, but there's going to be residential beside it. But I think knowing that, the inside baseball on some of it, maybe, it may be helpful for us all to toss that around and get other opinions, but I'm certainly, I don't know that hour and a half's warranted.
We don't have to put time limit.
But I think, but I'm saying a long time, but I certainly think, I'd like a more contextual view than, I'm more concerned about that, I guess, Ms. Bush, than the, than the streetscape thing that I've seen, but to me, it was, I want to hear more about what's going on around it and how it's going to fit in the overall picture and leave the site plan up to the people that do it. I'm fine with what they come up with.
So I'm going to try to summarize for staff since they're hearing conflicting comments and everything, what I think I heard, and then I hear from my colleagues if I'm right. I think the majority of us would benefit from a work session, doesn't have to be that long. I think what I heard was if there are modifications, shows examples of how that modification would look and how it would look as the standard, you know, comparison, some contextual stuff around the development, what's that planned, what it could be better, best-case scenario, worst-case scenario kind of thing, as far as, I guess, density, development types?
Some density because we talked about mixed, we've talked sometimes about mixed use, vertically mixed.
Right.
And then we get a horizontal north-south mix in front of us. So that, to me, says we're back to the flat, you know, we're not mixed use except flat, so horizontal and so, but I don't know for sure, we don't know the best case or worst case what's going to come around it. So that's.
Did I miss anything?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. So we're good? Okay.
Just so I'm clear, was this case, this case was evaluated to the current Cary community plan, right?
Yes.
That our citizens in this council and everybody spent four years coming up with?
Yes. We have very detailed analysis that's attached to the staff report.
Very, very detailed. So, you know, for me, for a change in the streetscape to make it a little more urban in an area that's going to be urban in a couple, few feet width from retaining walls, I just, I'm just not sure what we're looking for.
Okay, and you might be right when we can see it. I think maybe that's the issue. We want to visualize it and see it and get comfortable with it.
I would think it's valuable to hear our conversation because then these people who are looking to put stuff beside this or adjacent or adjoining don't come to us with something in left field because we had an eastern Cary gateway vision as well that was separate. We did, I guess we did it more rapidly. We did, I guess we did it more rapidly, or a separate part. And, um, I, I'm just, you know, I don't, I don't wanna have somebody come to us with something that's just off, off, I, I think we could, it may, but hearing comments may help them feel more comfortably, even emboldened to come forward with something really spectacular, if they hear good things about it. But, uh, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm okay with not critiquing this, I just want more context. And I can get that on my own without a work session, so I, I don't, but when you have a work session, I'm good.
Okay, any other comments before we move on? Mr. Stiegel, you good?
Well, the, the longer the conversation's gone, the, the more, um, I'm convinced that we now need a work session. Because, um, there's an obvious interest in the, significant interest by at least several council members in details, which will then necessitate us having to go to all of you one-on-one and then circle back with all of you again to let everyone know, you know, this council member said this, this council member said that. Um, I, I appreciate, um, Don's comments about how the initial review, you know, took place. But, um, there's obviously a heightened level of interest. And if we now don't do a work session, there will be the potential for a lot more confusion. With that being said, um, I would, I hope we could guard against making the project now overly complicated a- as, as well, so we'll have to try to find that balance.
It might be timing, I, I think it's too early for the work session. I think there's a lot of iterations going through, I don't think we're that far off on that.
I, I would agree with.
I, I just don't wanna make this more complicated. And I go back to, and I'm, I'm glad to have Don's, uh, feedback on that too, is it's not apples to apples to, uh, Fenton. It's totally different. And, um, it just happens to be a big one, and it happens to be a signature one. But we have a lot of checks and balances in place to deal with that. I, I don't wanna get mired in the minutia of a six-foot or ten-foot ret- retaining wall and how pretty it looks or how not pretty it looks. I think that can be done in the due process, uh, and doesn't need, um, a lengthy work session on it. I'm, you know, I'd just say maybe it's a timing thing, we see how this is playing out. And if you start to, if we start to see that, um, um, the vision is being challenged in several different ways, you know, maybe then it's a matter of, and more to get us together, you know, so that we're, uh, of like mind.
I think you're in the minority, though.
That's okay, I, I'm used to that.
Okay. I, I mean, I, I totally understand what you're saying. So, so as far as I understand, we're probably gonna do some.
Uh, what we're gonna do is, um, we're gonna come up with, have a plan that would show what the next steps are, that we normally take internally and with the developer, and then target an ideal time to then have the work session that would maximize, uh, the council's, uh, review and input.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stiegl.
And we'll get that to you next week.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Congressman.
All right, we'll move to our next public hearing, eighteen RE Z O three Camp Branch Farms rezoning. Scott Ramage will introduce this item, and council will not take action on this rezoning, but refer to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and we'll vote on this at a future meeting. Mr. Ramage.
Good evening. Now, this case is a rezoning request for a twenty-five acre property on Pierce Olive Road. The site is on the east side of Arthur, of, uh, Pierce Olive Road, about two-thirds a mile south of its intersection with Holly Springs Road and just north of the future planned right-of-way for the Southern Wake Expressway. There's also a progress energy transmission line easement that runs across the southeast corner of the site. The site is currently outside of Cary's ETJ and outside our town limits, but it's inside of Cary's urban service area. There is a pending annexation request with the case, and you held a hearing for that last month. This map shows the site in relation to the planning boundary between Cary and Holly Springs, as it's right on the line, and the boundary agreement goes right down, uh, Pierce Olive Road. Properties north and east of that line are in Cary's planning area, and the properties shaded yellow there are currently in the town limits, and the rest are in Cary's urban service area. Property in, uh, the urban service area is currently zoned by Wake County, and accordingly, the subject site currently has Wake County R thirty watershed zoning. The applicant is requesting rezoning to Cary's Transitional Residential District, conditional use, and eleven conditions have been offered. The applicant's first condition concerns allowed uses. This is a list of most of the uses permitted in the Transitional Residential District by right or as a special use. From among all those uses, the applicant proposes to only allow detached dwellings, semi-attached dwellings, or townhouses and neighborhood recreation. Since semi-attached housing is a type that doesn't come up very often, we thought we'd show a slide to illustrate exactly what it is. Semi-attached units occur in buildings of two to four dwellings, where the units share a common wall along anywhere from a quarter to a half of the depth of the dwelling. There is also a condition capping the number of dwellings at seventy-one units, which equates to a density of about two-point-seven units per acre. Another condition restricts townhouses and the semi-attached units to the southern four-hundred feet of the property illustrated and shaded here. The next condition sets aside fifty thousand square feet of open space in the southeast corner of the property, on the, uh, east side of the power easement as permanent open space or gathering space. There are four conditions related to the design of townhouses and semi-attached units. These include the use of masonry on the front facades of the units, limits on front offsets for any garages, the use of pitched roofs, and including windows on the end walls of any of the end u- of, on all of the end units. There are also several conditions related to detached housing. First, the minimum lot size would be seven thousand square feet instead of the five thousand square feet normal in TR District. Second, the minimum setbacks would be those shown here, all of which exceed the normal TR District minimums. And third, next to the property, you see with the yellow star on this map, any adjacent lots would be ten thousand square feet or larger in size. According to the Future Growth Framework, the site is part of an area designated as an emerging suburban neighborhood. And these areas are envisioned in the community plan to consist primarily of detached homes on lots of a quarter acre or larger, unless they're in clustered subdivisions when smaller lots could be appropriate. Suburban neighborhoods also allow for limited pockets of other housing types, such as townhouses and semi-attached homes. The eastern edge of the site is defined by extensive floodplain and stream buff- buffers associated with Camp Branch. There may also be a soil survey stream going through the center of the site, uh, coming down from its farm pond, but that will need to, need to be confirmed later by field survey. The Park's master plan recommends a future greenway trail along the east side of Camp Branch, which is off of the subject property. The Park's plan also recommends citing a future neighborhood park somewhere in the general vicinity, however site has not yet been acquired. The future roadways map designates Pierce Olive Road as a two-lane, undivided thoroughfare. The plan also recommends the extension of a two-lane collector's street across the northern part of the site, that would be an extension of Sky Meadow Drive you see on the far right of this, uh, image. Uh, incidentally, NC DOT's plans for the future I five forty Southern Wake Expressway currently envision the freeway going under Pierce Olive Road rather than over.
That's awesome.
The site is not presently served by fixed route bus service, and there are no plans to extend service to this area. Staff evaluated this case, uh, in terms of conformance with policies from the Imagine Cary Community Plan. The proposal conforms to the plan's policy to increase the variety of housing townwide, but a little less so its recommendation that small lot and attached housing be cited close to daily amenities and services and transit. The proposal conforms to the intent, uh, to have expanded housing choices within neighborhoods, though, so that as families age, they can move through different types of housing without having to leave their part of town. In terms of conformance with the growth framework, the site is, is in a suburban neighborhood where lots are recommended to be about a quarter acre or bigger, with small lots possible in clustered subdivisions, as we've noted. While there is a condition for that extra acre of community open space, staff still feels that the proposal falls short of guaranteeing a clustered subdivision. The community plan also mentions that suburban neighborhoods should have only limited pockets of small lot, townhouses, and attached housing. We showed you this map last month, when you heard a similar rezoning for, you heard eighteen RE Z O seven, which you see, uh, outlined in blue in the northern part of the map, and in the center is the site we're talking about tonight. Um, in terms of small pockets, this map of the growth framework shows the whole area south of ten-ten Road and all of the existing TR zoning that allows small lot and townhome development. Those are outlined in black on this map, and you see these two pending cases in blue. We found that even if both pending TR cases are approved, only about four-point-seven percent of that total area south of ten-ten would have TR equivalent zoning. So we think that conforms to the intent for having only limited pockets of these types of housing. Notification of tonight's hearing was mailed to all properties within eight hundred feet of the site, and the property was posted. A couple neighbors attended the neighborhood meeting on March seventh. Questions were raised concerning the types of proposed housing, the location of the townhomes on the site, and the location and size of the buffers. So this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant's representative is here tonight to offer his comments prior to opening the hearing.
This time I'll invite the applicant forward for their remarks.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group, here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, again, Mr. Ramage has done a thorough job, uh, presenting the nuts and bolts of the case. I do wanna highlight some of the conditions. Uh, uh, the applicant has worked hard to not only address the neighborhood concerns that were raised at our neighborhood meeting, but also to create a, a context-sensitive, uh, development, given its proximity to the five forty right-of-way, uh, but also to, to demonstrate to you all the type of development this will be. Uh, it, first of all, it's, it's less than three units to the acre, even though it's a TR zoning request. Uh, i- it is a request that's roughly, I think, two-point-seven, two-point-eight units to the acre. So it's a low-density residential development. Uh, while it is a TR request, there is a condition requiring a minimum of seven thousand square foot lot size for any, uh, detached dwelling and for some ten thousand square foot lots adjacent to the northeastern portion of the site. Uh, I would note that it's, I, I believe it's got appropriate lot dimensions for the, for the seven thousand square foot lots. There's a minimum of ten feet between the homes that would be constructed on the site, so it's not the, the six feet I think TR would potentially allow, um, if it were just TR general use without a condition. Uh, the townhomes, as shown on this graphic, and this is a very helpful graphic, are all located within four hundred feet of the proposed five forty right-of-way, well, excuse me, with, and, four hundred feet of our southern boundary, which is the closest point of the property to the five forty boundary. And I'll, I'll get into that in a moment. Uh, I believe the architectural commitments that are being made by the, by, by our, by the applicant are appropriate in this case and give the predictability associated with the town of Cary quality-style development that will be developed on the site. Uh, and last but certainly not least, the scenic overlook condition, which is a unique condition. Uh, you know, we have heard, and I, I talked to, uh, my client early in the process about the continued dialogue at this table related to ensuring that, uh, common areas are provided, adequate common areas are provided for residential dwellings. This would be, you know, designed and would be called a community gathering area. In fact, our first draft said a minimum of, you know, at least fifty thousand square feet of community gathering space, which is like ten times what would otherwise be required. The concern that staff elevated, and I agree, there's some language in the community gathering area, uh, ordinance that requires it to be centrally located. And so to avoid any confusion associated with the location of this, we instead said, in addition to the community gathering space that's otherwise required, we're gonna provide this scenic overlook. And I saw some raised eyebrows and some chuckles with regard to scenic overlook. There's a reason why it's called a scenic overlook. Uh, there is, from this point here to the center line of the creek, and, and as was mentioned, there's a center line of a creek that, uh, is essentially our boundary. There's a seventy feet of drop from this point here to this point here. And it's, as you get closer, there's forty feet of drop roughly in this area here. There's a significant drop. And so when my client first looked at the site, their, their first yield analysis, which is the first thing that a developer does, they go and say, okay, what can this site yield? Their first yield analysis showed townhome units across that transmission line and in that area. When they walked the site, uh, my client, the first thing he thought of was hemlock bluffs, given the, the significant drop on that side of the property. And so what he, what they have decided to do is to make that a feature that can be used by members of the community to preserve that green space area, to provide, there will be connectivity from that area, there will be a path that connects it to the, to the, essentially, the development itself. And so that's a, a priority item for them. Again, it would be called community gathering area, but for some concerns associated with how that language works. Um, we believe this is the right transition, and, and the reason why is we, we have provided the larger lots on the, the north side of the property, the seven thousand square foot lots kind of on the, the, the meat of the property and any townhomes. And we're not saying all townhomes, we're still working on a, a design. But any townhomes have to be located on the southernmost portion. And that's because of, you know, noise concerns associated with five forty. You don't wanna lot, single-family detached typically adjacent to five forty. It's also, it, I think it will aid in the, in the development of this parcel. Uh, we don't know what's gonna happen with that site. We're gonna have to provide connectivity to it as part of the site plan process. That staff, the ordinance and the staff will require that some vehicular connection occur. They're not gonna, as you can see, there's control of access for the entirety of that property. So the only access that this site is going to have will be through our parcel. We believe that this site will develop for something non-detached dwelling. My guess is townhome or something more intense, don't know what that is, and I can't certainly speak for those property owners. But we believe that providing for townhomes adjacent to that site not only provides for the right transition away from five forty, but also makes, you know, developing that parcel easier. If you developed exclusively single-family detached in this area and then propose a townhome community next door, you're probably, with its exclusive access through that detached dwelling, uh, community, my guess is you're gonna have some public opposition to that. So, uh, we believe it's the right transition as you move from five forty. The larger lots are to the north, and so it kind of tells the next folks who are mov- you know, developing property in this area, that as you transition away from five forty, the idea is to get to those quarter acre lots, 'cause that's what we have made a commitment to do along that, uh, northeastern boundary. And so, uh, with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we appreciate the time. We look forward to you all's feedback, as always, and look forward to working through the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barron. Now's the time for the public hearing, eighteen RE Z O three Camp Branch Farms rezoning. And I would invite our first speaker forward. Nope. Anyone speak, anyone at all?
Psych.
Seeing no one, close the public hearing and open it up to our council members for questions or comments.
I have a couple of questions. Um, what's the, um, timeline for five forty there? Does anyone know?
Uh, it's a very good question, and I think I will defer to, uh, pre-them contact.
They've accelerated and packaged together, and they're funded and ready to go, right?
Right, so what's the date?
They're writing like contracts fourth quarter.
Great, so what's the date?
It's a combined, uh, right-of-way.
Dana, Dana.
Yeah, they're gonna want you up with the.
Sorry about that. Uh, yes, it's a combined right-of-way and, and construction project. They've already started to notify the area, the property owners in the area. And, um, the total build-out, I'm not sure, many years, um, but, you know, right-of-way will be underway shortly.
So, would it be likely, would it be fair to say, kind of, if this art is to move forward, it'd be about the same time as development?
You're talking about moving dirt?
I think twenty-twenty-one is something like a move dirt.
Oh, Sean knows.
Well, no, I don't think we should guess. I think we should find out and report back to you.
That would be great.
Well, the reality is, we know it's coming, whether it comes three years from now or eight years from now. We know it's coming, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So at the end of the day, we're planning for a townhome-type community next to five forty one day. I have questions regarding the topography, especially nearing the scenic overlook area and how that meets five forty. Five forty way downhill from?
Five forty is, is gonna be in a cut. So if you kind of imagine, uh, when you go down Kildare Farm Road and you cross over sixty-four.
Okay.
It's gonna be some, it's somewhat similar to that. So the freeway's gonna be in a cut there.
Okay.
As you move, um, east from the site, across Camp Branch, uh, the whole topography drops into a lower plane, a lower, a lower level. It's, as, uh, Jason mentioned, it drops. Um, so not only will, uh, Pierce Olive Road go over, but if you remember, a little bit, um, just off the property line will also be the greenway. And DOT is also planning that the Cary Greenway, uh, would cross over on a pedestrian bridge. So it's, it's down there, um, a little bit away, which is a good thing for sound, too.
Okay.
Sound doesn't travel as well uphill as it does downhill.
I, I was one of those that snickered, laughed, or whatever, when the term scenic overlook was mentioned, because it's gonna be a scenic overlook of five forty. Um, I don't know how scenic that is. Yeah, while you could probably build some units on that, I mean, how marketable or desirable would they really be, honestly, so? So it's a give, but, you know, it's, I don't know, I feel all that great about it.
People pay to watch cars, Doc.
Yeah, I know.
Well, I worry for the Cameron Pond.
Jesus, they're racing in an oval. So I think the use makes sense. I don't necessarily have a problem with the higher density next to 540, even though units per acre, it's not that dense in the grand scheme of thing. Part of that is because the site is burdened with stream buffers and transition lines and whatever else, but that's not my problem. So, you know, I just don't have a whole lot of heartburn over the use. I would like to know more maybe about that scenic overlook, and is it just a path to it, and is it going to remain natural? Are there going to be amenities there? Is there going to be a shelter there? Is there going to be picnic tables there? Is it going to actually be a place that people want to go?
And it's a 70-foot drop, so is there a zip line that goes down, or is there a...
I don't want to work that.
Funicular?
Know that.
Really want to know how they're going to get to this important gathering space, right? How easy will it be?
So my question is to my colleagues, would a picture from the townhome site to the scenic overlook area...
Just a better description of what's going to be there and what kind of value that is going to provide to the adjacent community, so.
Okay. Other comments?
Well, just the one other comment that every time we see something like this next to a 540, in the past, when we've had a residential community next to something that's impactful, we've often asked the applicant to do something like, some sort of notification to prospective homeowners, right, to let them know, you know, they buy the house, maybe they don't necessarily know that there's 540 coming in because they get it, you know, in a short timeframe. It would be nice to see if the applicant would be willing to do that, that this applicant's worked on several of those types of things before, but it'd be nice to tell them upfront, "Hey, by the way, there's this, you know, six-lane highway coming within, you know, several hundred feet of you, because I don't want another Cameron Pond issue come to us afterwards, where people, you know, mistakes were made, but, you know, they didn't know." That would be great.
Any other comments? Okay, this will go to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation. We will see it at a future date. Thank you, Mr. Ramage. We now move to our sixth public hearing, 18REZ12 Cary Point PDD rezoning. Ms. Redling will introduce the item. Council will not take action tonight, but will refer to our Planning and Zoning Board.
Thank you. Good evening. This is a rezoning request to amend the existing Highcroft Village PDD and create a new 10.2-acre Cary Point PDD at the corner of Morrisville Parkway and Highway 55 and Northwestern Cary. This two-part rezoning begins with amending Tract 5 of Highcroft Village. Highcroft Village stretches from Morrisville Parkway at the north end to below Greenhope School Road at the south end. Tract 5 is located at the north end. Here's a zoomed-in view of Tract 5, which is divided into north and south by Morrisville Parkway. Tract 5 South contains 6.01 acres, and the first rezoning action proposed by the applicant is to remove 1.168 acres from the eastern side of the tract. You can see that much of the property to be removed is impacted by streams. No other changes are proposed for Tract 5 South. The second rezoning action proposed by the applicant is to add the 1.168 acres to two adjacent parcels to create a new 10-point acre Cary Point PDD. Here's an aerial view of the proposed PDD site. There are two adjacent projects you should be aware of. West of the subject site, staff is currently reviewing a development plan for preschool, that's case 18 Development Plan DP0129. The development plan for the preschool would not be impacted by the proposed removal of the 1.2 acres. And staff has recently received an application to rezone this property and this property to general, commercial, and R8 residential. The neighborhood meeting for this rezoning application is scheduled for September 5th. Currently, the existing use for that property is American soil and mulch, and other adjacent uses are Blakely subdivision, that's almost completed, Sedgfield subdivision, self-storage, the Army Reserve Center, and the Oaks at Highcroft North. The existing base zoning for the proposed PDD site is Plan Development District Major and Office Research and Development. The proposed zoning is PDD Minor. The applicant has submitted this proposed master land use plan for the new Cary Point PDD. The PDD would have two sub-districts. R1 would be the residential sub-district containing approximately 8.2 acres. C1 would be the commercial sub-district containing approximately 2 acres. The green-hatched area represents the stream buffers that will be required. A 100-foot stream buffer will be required along the southern perimeter of the site, and a 50-foot stream buffer will be required along the western perimeter of the site. These streams are unnamed tributaries to Panther Creek. The permitted uses in R1 would be a maximum of 120 age-restricted multifamily units and associated amenities and recreation. The applicant is proposing a condition that requires 30% of first-floor building area to be devoted to private amenities for the residents. Maximum building height would be 55 feet. For the C1 commercial sub-district, the permitted uses would be those listed here, and you'll know, restaurants would not have a drive-through, but there may be a pharmacy with a drive-through. In the commercial sub-district, building floor area would be restricted to 25,000 square feet, and the maximum building height would be 42. This map shows the proposed open space and circulation plan for the PDD. In return for flexibility in zoning standards, Cary's land development ordinance requires that PDDs deliver high-quality designs that preserve critical environmental resources, provide above-average open-space amenities, and use creative building and circulation layout. The applicant is proposing 3,600 square feet of community gathering space, which is a 50% increase over the LDO requirement for this lot of this site of 2,400 square feet. There would be vehicular cross-access between the residential and commercial sub-districts, a pedestrian path between the sub-districts depicted by the purple dashed line, and an additional pedestrian circulation route depicted by the blue dashed line. The area along the western perimeter outside the required stream buffer on the western perimeter will remain as undisturbed vegetation. The vehicular access points proposed by the applicant. The two direct accesses into the site off of Morrisville Parkway and the direct access off of Highway 55 would be right-in, right-out only. Cross-access to a future full-movement intersection would be allowed through the property to the west through a zoning condition that is, would be added to the Highcroft PDD. This map shows proposed perimeter and streetscape buffers. The applicant is proposing to meet all the LDO buffer standards, with the exception of the streetscape along Morrisville Parkway adjacent to the R1 residential sub-district. Here, the LDO standard is 50 feet, and the applicant is proposing a 30-foot wide streetscape. The applicant is proposing a parking rate of 1.25 spaces per dwelling unit for the R1 sub-district and has provided a written justification attached to your staff report. The justification is based on data that indicates there is reduced parking demand associated with age-restricted units. The parking rate for the C1 sub-district would follow LDO requirements for any use proposed. A neighborhood meeting was held on June 6th, 17 citizens attended. Concerns were expressed about increased traffic along Morrisville Parkway and about the proposed building height and buffering. Questions were asked about the background data used in the traffic analysis report, as well as about the proposed use. Staff was also contacted by two citizens who had concerns about the multifamily use, the buffering, increased traffic, and what one citizen said she felt was overdevelopment in this part of town. Staff has evaluated the case against the policies of the Imagine Cary Community Plan. On the Future Growth Framework map, a small portion of the site is designated for traditional neighborhood uses, and the remainder is designated for future business industrial park uses. Traditional neighborhoods generally are predominantly single-family detached, but may include moderate amounts of other housing types, such as multifamily. Multifamily, though, tends to be located at the periphery of the neighborhood. Business and industrial parks traditionally contain professional offices, light industrial, warehousing, and distribution, and overall development intensities are suburban in character with mostly surface parking. Staff has evaluated the applicant's proposal against live, workshop, and state and shape policies. Live policies encourage more housing options for everyone, including our burgeoning senior population. Shape and shop policies encourage placing apartments, especially senior housing, and new commercial development in walkable, vibrant, mixed-use areas with nearby transit. Work policies encourage reserving office parks for traditional offices and light industry. The Cary Point PDD would have some office and commercial, but it should be noted that the shallow width of the subject site, the stream buffer impacts, and the right-of-way requirements would make it difficult to accommodate large office uses. The site's topography and perimeter stream buffers would help to create an appropriate transition from the multifamily apartments to adjacent uses. Cary's GIS maps and previous field studies indicate stream buffers will impact this property. The PRCR facility's master plan shows a street-side trail is proposed along Highway 55 adjacent to the site. A street-side trail is also proposed for the north side of Morrisville Parkway. NC Highway 55 and Morrisville Parkway are both designated as future four-lane median-divided thoroughfares. West of the site, the Morrisville Parkway Extension and NC 540 interchange project is currently under construction. This project will fill in the remaining missing segments of Morrisville Parkway, and when construction is complete, Morrisville Parkway will likely become a major east-west route. Go Triangle Route 311, a peak period service between Apex and RTP, operates along Highway 55 but does not stop in the vicinity of this location. Stop may be added in the future based on demand. A traffic study performed for this site studied the intersections depicted here on the map with yellow dots. As a result of site-generated traffic, the study recommended several improvements, including improvements to the NC 55 and Morrisville Parkway intersection. Staff believes the subject rezoning, as well as the upcoming rezoning across the street on Morrisville Parkway that we saw earlier, will have a significant impact on the intersection. The applicant hasn't offered to complete any of the transportation improvements recommended in the study. Prior to tonight's public hearing, property owners within 800 feet of the subject property were notified by mail. The property was posted, and notice was placed on the town website. This concludes staff's presentation. I believe the applicant's representative is here to offer remarks before the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Redling. At this time, I'd invite the applicant's representative forward for their remarks.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Glenda Topp. I'm here tonight on behalf of the owners of the property. Ms. Redling did an excellent job going over the proposed rezoning. I'm just going to touch on a couple of key points. First of all, as she pointed out, there are two components to this rezoning. One is the amendment to the Highcroft Village PDD, and then the other one is the creation of the new PDD Cary Point. There's just a small portion of land that's being taken out of Highcroft Village. The current use of that property is open space. When it goes into the new PDD Cary Point, that will also be used as open space. Earlier on, and it's been quite a few months now, there was the rezoning for the daycare site or the preschool site that Ms. Redling referred to earlier in her presentation. One of the reasons why the additional acreage was obtained to include into the Cary Point PDD was to allow for connectivity across that stream buffer so that they would have access to the full access point that is on, that is planned for Morrisville Parkway. So at that time, the property owner had pointed out the importance of this land having access to that connectivity point. So with the inclusion into this PDD, that will ensure that that happens. Just a little bit of history, this is a piece of property, or two parcels, that I have been working on for many, many years now. Originally, it was owned by Life Experiences and Betty Gibson, who, back in the day, was a former Planning and Zoning Board member. We looked at numerous possibilities for this piece of property. It was very obvious from the very beginning that there was a lot of challenges to the property, one being the roads, Morrisville Parkway to the north, Highway 55, and then it's not on this map, but on one of the other maps that staff pointed out, you can see all the stream buffers that pretty much isolate the site and make it a little bit challenging to come up with a development plan. Prior to the adoption of the Cary Community Plan in January of 2017, this was designated on Cary's land use plan for a future neighborhood activity center. However, even before submitting this rezoning request, it became clear that that whole area was beginning to develop in a way that was taking away some of the major characteristics of a neighborhood activity center, which became clear when the town adopted the new Cary Community Plan in 2017. As staff pointed out, the property is located both in a traditional neighborhood designation and in the industrial business park designation. In both of those categories, a planned development district is allowed to be submitted. Ms. Redling also pointed out that with the PDD, it's important to deliver high-quality designs that preserve critical environmental resources, providing above-average open-space amenities and other creative building and circulation layouts. We feel with this proposed PDD that we've done that. Just want to point out some of the ways that we have accomplished this. The LDO does require 2,400 square feet of community gathering space. We've offered 3,600 square feet. As you noticed on the map that was brought up earlier, you can see how we have shown connectivity through both the residential to the non-residential, and also with the open space with that stream buffer area, there is an opportunity to provide a trail system and other amenities that can go within there that is allowed, even though that is a stream buffer. We have also looked at trying to be creative with coming up with a condition that addresses what can be inside that residential building. There was discussion during the development of this PDD that the type of facility being offered is one that would provide eating and other facilities just for this development. So we worked with staff to craft a zoning district that says a minimum of 30% of the first-floor building area in the R1 residential sub-district is dedicated to non-residential uses that support age-restricted principal use, and also it's clear that the amenities contained within the residential structure shall not be open or available to the general public. So basically, there will be amenities within this building, but they will only be offered to the residents that are living here. I won't go over the policies in the Cary Community Plan that were identified as the ones that we comply with, but we do feel that the two uses here complement one another, they complement this area. It's important to note that definitely because of the stream buffers, it is pretty well-isolated between the stream buffers and Highway 55 and Morrisville Parkway. I feel very strongly that the applicant has done an excellent job finding the best use for the property and has developed a plan that takes into account the adjacent uses and is sensitive to the surrounding area. The proposed PDD meets the goals and visions of the Cary Community Plan and will be an asset to this part of Cary. Also want to note that we are still working on the recommendations of the TAR. We'll be meeting with staff. We do know that there was that application that was submitted across the street that also had a TAR, so we are going to meet, continue to meet with staff, and thank you for the opportunity to address council, and look forward to your comments. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Topp. Now's the time for the public hearing for eighteen REZ twelve Cary Point PDD rezoning, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? See, no one. We'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments.
I just have one question. When is the streetscape at Sedgfield and the other um, uh, residentials along Morrisville Parkway? Cause they're asking for a reduction in streetscape, so I'm wondering what the others were.
I don't know.
Okay. Well, maybe when you get a chance.
Yeah, I'll check.
Other questions, comments? Okay, this will go to the Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and we will see this at a later date for final action. That takes us to our seventh public hearing, seventeen REZ fourteen A Amendment of the Fenton Mixed Use Rezoning Ordinance. Once again, Mr. Wilson will introduce the item. Council will not take action. We're gonna refer to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation. Mr. Wilson?
Uh, good evening again, council. Fenton returns to you this evening for just a technical amendment to its adopted rezoning ordinance. As you will recall, on January twenty-fifth, the council unanimously approved a rezoning ordinance for Fenton. The ordinance had a condition that was offered by the applicant, which specified Columbia Development by name. As often happens with development projects, Columbia is looking to partner with another entity to build the project and will need to create a new development company with a new name. In order to address this situation, Columbia Development has requested an amendment to the rezoning ordinance to allow flexibility regarding the name of the actual development entity while providing assurance that Columbia will still remain actively involved in the project. Given the minor technical nature of the amendment, there is no applicant presentation, so council may proceed with the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Now's the time for the public hearing, seventeen REZ fourteen A Amendment of the Fenton Mixed Use Rezoning Ordinance, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? See, no one. Open it up to council members for questions or comments. This seems pretty straightforward. It's gonna go to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation. All right. We now-
Thank you.
-go to our last public hearing. It's an order to demolish and remove a dwelling at one-thirty Gold Meadow Drive. Interim Planning Director Alan Kane will present this item, and council may take action. Mr. Kane?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council. This presentation is about a minimum housing case for the dwelling located at one-three-zero Gold Meadow Dr- Gold Meadow Drive. Now, zooming in, you will see that Gold Meadow Drive is in the Edghill Farm subdivision, situated in the southwest quadrant of the High House Road and old Apex Road intersection. Now, after receiving several complaints from surrounding property owners and the homeowners' association, the town's minimum housing officer investigated the Duaney, uh, the dwelling. Uh, I have a few images that illustrate what he found and will report on the actions he has taken. This front elevation uh, shows some of the exterior of issues with the dwelling. You will notice an unsecured garage door, an open soffit over the garage, and an opening on the chimney chaise where siding and underlayment are missing. This image of the rear shows an opening in the roof deck that allows rainwater to infiltrate the structure, and below the window are signs of siding and wall rot. Uh, this condition is evident in several places along the struc- rear structure wall.
That's what I'm saying, isn't it? Space. Green roof.
These images represent some of the interiors condition. On the left is an opening in the bathroom ceiling, and there's one of several throughout the house where water infiltrates the structure. And on the right is an image of the rear wall at that same window shown from the previous slide. The discoloration of the carpeting exists because of mold, mildew, and floor rot to the degree that one cannot stand on that part of the floor without risk of falling through. Now, in addition to these structural systems mentioned, the minimum housing officer found that the HVAC was inoperable and the electrical system was heavily damaged. He also determined that the dwelling had been vacant for seven years. It is important to note that no one currently lives in this house, so no individual or family will be displaced by any action taken tonight. The reality is, this unoccupied dwelling is simply rotting away to the detriment of the neighborhood. Our officer found that the Wake County Tax Office currently values the structure at forty-nine thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars. And after providing notice to the owner and holding a hearing on the matter, the minimum housing officer found that the dwelling was dilapidated, as defined by statute, because the cost of repairing the dwelling exceeded fifty percent of its value. In fact, third-party estimates put the cost to repair closer to one-hundred and thirty percent of building value. And so as a result of this dilapidated designation, the minimum housing officer entered an order requiring the owner to repair or demolish the dwelling within a specified date. We extended that date once because the owner was negotiating with a private entity to either acquire or repair the house. That date passed, and the owner has not complied with the order. And as a result, the minimum housing officer may cause the dwelling to be demolished if council adopts an order, ordinance ordering him to do so. And so those actions bring us to tonight's meeting. And so we understand this is a difficult situation for not only the property owner and the neighbors, but also for you as you deliberate this decision. However, while difficult for everyone, we find it necessary to recommend that at the end of the public hearing, council adopt an ordinance ordering the demolition and removal of the structure located at one-three-zero Gold Meadow Drive to protect the health, safety, and appearance of our community. And that, Mayor, concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Now's the time for the public hearing for an order to demolish and remove dwelling at one-thirty Gold Meadow Drive, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Good evening, Mayor and council. That is um, my property.
Could you give us your name, please?
Teresa Whitley. And I really can't say anything, but I'm really sorry that happened. The current letter, they're requesting that, a seven-day window, and yes, the house is in poor shape at this moment, but currently it is, still does contain my belongings. And there's no way I can get my belongings out of there in seven days. I run a little business in town and I work seven days a week, and that's part of the problems with what's happened to the house, but I really would like to have a ninety-day extension to get my belongings out of the house.
Good evening, council. I'm Kelly McCullen. I live at one-zero-eight Weathersfield Drive in the same community as one-thirty Gold Meadow. I'm gonna offer a different vision of this property. That journey you see in those photos began in early two thousand and nine. It's the first year of the Obama's first-term administration, that's how long this journey has been. That's what a house looks like that's been ignored and neglected for a decade. Public sentiment on that property started as sympathy. It's fair enough, as empathy, then concern, then of course, the economic worry, then little bit of safety worry, and then the old rabid Apex animal, I guess they found a- and so it kind of flourished this idea of this house that has been sitting there for a decade, neglected for whatever reason. I'm the president of the homeowners' association, but I'm here as a citizen, cause I don't wanna speak on behalf of the HOA, but the HOA invested thousands of dollars to clean up the exterior of that property. We wouldn't touch the home because we didn't feel it was right. We cleared the open lot. It went right back to the way it was, and our association was out three thousand dollars. This is a sad situation. I'd rather be here with a, to win a medal, or to give you or bestow something on you, but the fact is, that's a fine property with a very bad dwelling on it that's been allowed to fall apart in the town of Cary. I wanna commend Daryl. Uh, Mr. Kane, is that where you're new? Uh, but Mr. Parnell was here through it all. He kept neighbors, not me per se, cause I understand the complexities of it, but some of the neighbors were pretty fired up, and Mr. Parnell deftly handled their frustrations, guided us through bureaucracy, actually went and tried to find new and novel ways to preserve this dwelling. And every one of them failed from his approach, and there's even an investor here tonight who offered multiple times, who tried to find answers for this property, because it, on paper, is a fine property, but in reality, it's a neglected dump, and it's dangerous. And I think, in my opinion as a resident, we are completely out of options. We did our thing on the private side with private investors, the town did its thing with bureaucracy, slowing things down to make sure that everything is understood from my estimation, keeping us at bay, keeping us informed. I can't thank them enough, and I do regret that I have to come up here as a representative of this neighborhood and see you folks, but we need your help, and I'm sorry for the owner. I do feel bad for her. It is a sad situation. That, that's, Cary's a nice place no matter where you step foot in it. But that property needs help. It needs to be removed for the children in that neighborhood, for the wildlife that crawl in and out through that garage door, cause I've seen one rot in the soffit and fall out into the driveway, bone by bone and fur by fur. We've had ten years to empty the house and tear it down. We now need your help as our representative of a very fine town in North Carolina, and thank you very much. And thanks to you, Daryl, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? See, no one. We'll close the public hearing. Mr. Kane, I'll start the questions with, what authority is there to remove the interior or the contents of a dwelling before it's removed? I mean, before it's demolished?
Well, the owner has the, uh, the option to remove those at any time.
Right. But I'm saying, so if we adopt an ordinance to demolish it, what about the contents?
So at, at the time that, um, at the ti- if the owner does not, uh, remove the contents, at the time that the contract is issued for, uh, the dwelling to be demolished, part of the one term is that the contractor can remove the contents on his own, and then a surplus of those, um, uh, those items, uh, to help pay for, to help offset the cost of the, uh, of the demolition.
Can you, can you explain a little bit more about, so what is the process? You, we pass the ordinance and what's the timeline like?
How fast will things happen?
Yeah.
Will they really start tearing it down in seven days?
Well, when you pass the ordinance, and um, uh, Daryl, if you don't mind coming down, uh, if, when you pass the ordinance, the ordinance really, uh, still goes to the, uh, the first order of business goes to the property owner. So the order is to have the property owner, just like we've issued before, to demolish the building. And so if the property owner fails to demolish the building, then, uh, during the, whatever time period, whether it's seven days, thirty days, or ninety days, if the owner fails to, um, to do that during that time period, then the town is authorized to, um, uh, issue, uh, issue a contractual service to demolish the building. If their contents still, if there are valuables, uh, remaining inside the building, then those are sold-
Correct.
-uh, to help offset the cost of the, sold by the contractor to help offset the cost of the, uh, of the demolition and removal. Do you get that right?
Yes, they'll be inventoried and sold, and the proceeds will go back to offset the cost of the demolition, which will be filed at Wake County on the registered deeds against the property.
Okay. Other questions?
Just so I'm clear, how long has the town been working on this? I mean, how, how much notification has there been for the property owner that the town was pursuing demolition?
That the town's been pursuing demolition?
Yeah, or to get, to get to this process, to get to where we are tonight.
We, this has been going on for, uh, nominally two-plus years. I, I've read documents back in two thousand and six-
The property owners had two years' warning to start gathering up their things and get them out of the house.
I think that's a fair statement, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, but asking for ninety days after ten years. Um, you know, I know there are churches, I know there's services that I'm sure can help, but um, after all this time, um, you know, I think we have to, you know, protect the interests of the community and protect the interests of Cary. Um, you know, I'm not inclined to, uh, give, uh, ninety days. Now, if it takes ninety days to get all the, you know, the orders, uh, submitted and the contractor and so forth, and it makes sense from that, that aspect, fine, but um, you know, I think we've reached a point where, uh, we have to go ahead with this ordinance and, and just get moving on it.
Well, just to clarify that, make sure I understand, once that contract is issued, the contents and the building and its demolition belong to the contractor?
Yes, sir.
So then it's too late? Just-
No, I understand. That, that's good, that's, um, um-
Sorry, can you say that, so we, we've, um-
So there's seven days, if we pass this ordinance, there's seven days, and after that is done, it belongs to the contractor.
I wanted to make sure.
And they can do whatever they want.
Mayor, if I could clarify-
Yes.
-the owner's given seven days within which to make the repairs or do something, and then it falls on our housing inspector to enter into a contract and follow through. He doesn't have to move exactly at seven days. It's, the seven days applies to the rights of the owner to take some action.
So then my question-
And then we'll, and then the town would enter into a contract after that period of time.
And how fast does that usually happen?
That I'm not-
Roughly. Like days, weeks, months?
We've done a few of them this year.
Are you asking how long it takes for the demolition contractor to start the work and finish the work?
How long before the contract is signed? Before she loses her ability to do anything.
Correct. Uh, so typically what happens is, as soon as the, uh, if, if council and, uh, you guys adopt the ordinance, at that time, we will send out RFPs to, uh, uh, get the contractors time enough to look at the property, assess the property, and come back with bids, and at that time, in that RFP, we will set a time date for those RFPs to be submitted back, and then Chief Kane and myself, at that time, will open those and then choose a contractor and pretty much set a time date.
How long is the RFP process?
It can be a, a week.
It's informal. It would be, to get back to, someone mentioned earlier, days or weeks, it's days after the time period extends for the owner to, to bring about a correction. We could-
So there is a sense of urgency after tonight. The clock is ticking. Things are gonna happen very rapidly now.
Assuming you adopt an ordinance and give the timeframe.
Well, if we, um, adopt the ordinance with a, a date, uh, of fourteen days from now or thirty days from now, can we do that? Chris?
So you're suggesting changing the seven days to-
What if we make the motion to adopt this effective, um, September fifteenth? I mean, I'm just pulling that out of-
Maybe in-
And then you start it all, and then somebody, you know, let, let the lady know that you got-
I can suggest that instead you, um, have changed the seven days in section two to fourteen days, thirty days.
Days or whatever.
Whatever it is, and that gives the owner that period of time within which to act, either to fix it or to remove her contents.
I, I personally like that idea. I think, um, obviously, the clock has been ticking for ten years and for longer, and I have great respect for all the neighbors who have been living with this for a while, but I also think that an additional seven days doesn't hurt anyone and might help someone. So I, I, if you're willing to make that as a motion, I would support that. Mr. Smith?
Well, if, if, if I was moving forward on, on a motion, I'd, I would, a move that we go ahead with this with, uh, and modify the seven days to fifteen days.
In the form of a motion?
I would make that, uh-
And I'll second it.
And just to look at my town attorney, you're okay with that? Is that clear enough, or we need to specify exactly something else?
What you are saying is to modify the ordinance that's in front of you, section two reads, "The owner of the property herein described is hereby ordered to demolish and remove the dwelling within seven days of the adoption of this ordinance," and you're changing that to fourteen days.
Fifteen days.
To fifteen days, I'm sorry.
Okay. And that's what you understand, Ms. Bush?
Yes.
Okay. Does everybody understand the motion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No. Motion passes five to one. Thank you, Mr. Kane.
Yes, sir.
That takes us to discussion items which have been tabled. My understanding, there's no closed session.
No closed session.
There's no other action- There's no other action on the agenda that we need to take care of, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moves.
There's a motion in a second. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we're adjourned. Thank you.
This has been a production of Cary TV. Visit the Town of Cary website at townofcary.org.